A Jets fan?
Listen.
Okay, that might be worse.
It is a girl.
It's not a girl.
It is.
It's not. Don't put that bad juju out there. You imagine me as a girl dad? I'll go crazy. Because she wants me to have a girl. I'm like, no, I cannot be a girl dad.
I said that too. That's a great thing.
It's beautiful.
Have any because we're so confident. Really?
Yes.
Well, it's funny because I played pickleball to a guy named Gunner. That's Gunner.
There's a cup there if you want some, so we don't have to hear the crackling.
Call to order of Miniola City Council. Left for law rights for a moment of silence invites Mayor Julius in to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review.
Looks good to me, thank you.
It's fine, thank you.
If we could just move now that we have, of course, number 11 tabled. Can we move number 13?
Number 11 has not been tabled yet.
Has not been, okay. In any case, can we move 13 up to the top?
Joe, anything?
No, find a way it is.
There was a request to table the best access thing for the convenience store. Part of it was something that I brought on when meeting with the applicant yesterday, looking at the concept plans. It came to my attention, talking to adjacent property owners, that there wasn't really a defined shared access between the two projects. It was on one concept plan. And the other applicant was about to send their end, so we had to. If you put your hat back on to the access between Miniola Ridge, and that it was on a concept plan, and one of the developers was like, well, it's on the concept plan here, and the other developers were like, I want it here. So my concern was, would like to have seen a, some type defined agreement between the two property owners of where.
It's like these of them.
Like where it was. And we had the same thing where we wouldn't approve Miniola, wouldn't approve Miniola Ridge, not Miniola Ridge, wouldn't approve founders until they figured the road out. Remember that day? Until they got the roads worked out. I feel the shared access is going to be a requirement from the county, and they probably need to, but it's a, the two developers need to work together. I don't think it's a city issue. I think we have good relationships with both the developers, and I just hope they work it out and don't put the city in the middle of it because I don't think it's the city's responsibility. And with that said, they would like to leave, to move forward, to have this tabled, if they would, or whatever y'all would like. But Scott, you got anything to say? I wanted to get a background, it's kind of like, I'm the one that started the, the one of.
Yes, we, I saw there was an email today from the applicant's attorney, who I believe is here tonight, and they might, may want to expound on this a little bit requesting. Plus, as you know, they had a community meeting with some of the residents just Thursday. I think they wanted to, the email said that they wanted to work on some of the issues they, feedback they got from that, plus the cross-access issue that the mayor discussed. Continuance is within the, is a procedural matter, within the discretion of council. And so it is, as you know, we, almost as a matter of right, the first request, now this is the second request for continuance, but as long as there's good cause shown and it's not being done for delay tactics or things like that, as long as there's good cause for continuance, it's recommended it be granted.
Okay, but with.
And I think, I think they let the word known that they were requesting a continuance, and I imagine that's why it's not quite as full as some of the past meetings as well.
Now, we did receive a letter from a request to become a participant, and.
Yeah, that's a, kind of a separate issue there.
But they wanted to speak on behalf of the continuance.
Oh, yes, there was an email, I think, that came in just a few hours ago that I saw. There was one of the residents asked to be able to intervene as a party. I'll have to take a look at that, and frankly, the continuance will give us some time to look and see whether they're appropriate to be added as a party. It would appear, from the thing that they, to be a party, you have to have a special interest that's different from the community at large, different in kind, not just in degree. It appears as though they're situated very much like their neighbors and the other folks, so, but regardless, as you know, Miniola has always been very liberal, I'll give that word, as far as, I don't want to say liberal-conservative, but liberal as far as allowing participants to take part in hearings, to put on evidence, to even cross-examine if need be, so that everybody feels that they've had all their issues heard. So even if they're not made a party, and we'll look at that in between now and the next meeting, assuming it's continued, they will be allowed to fully participate and have any of their concerns addressed.
At that point in time, if he would like to come forward and speak, and why he would like this, why he feels this needs to be forward.
Or the quester.
The quester.
While he's walking, but just one quick comment on that, to your point, Scott, this is the second time that they asked for a continuance, correct?
Yes. The applicant, yes.
The applicant, yes. So my opinion is, you have three strikes, right? So this is the second one. Me personally, I will vote in favor, but again, my opinion is that this should be the last time. If they ask for another one, I will, I will deny.
With that said, go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, thank you. My name's Clinton Palnell, I reside at 14205 Hunter's Trace Lane, outside of the city limits of Miniola, inside the city limits, or county limits of unincorporated Lake County, which abuts right up to the property that's in question. I respectfully urge the council to deny the applicant's continuance request. This matter has been properly noticed under Chapter 106 of the City Miniola Land Development Code. The applicant has received all required public notice, including mailed and posted notice, as well as this hearing. The applicant has had ample opportunity to prepare and present evidence. The identical application was previously heard and unanimously denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission after review of staff recommendations and public testimony. No new material evidence or changed circumstances are presented to justify delaying the council's, or delaying the council's consideration for the applicant. Granting continuance without good is prejudicial to the many residents who have appeal, appear here tonight, and have appeared here in the past, in reliance on the city's published notices. It would also risk exceeding the 60-day window under Section 106-2, see paragraph one of the Land Development Code, which would require new certified mail notices and repostings at the applicant's expense. Such a delay undermines the administrative efficiency and public confidence in the quasi-judicial process. Both the applicant and the surrounding property owners are entitled to due process. That due process includes a timely decision based on the existing record. For these reasons, and in the interest of fairness, efficiency, and transparency, I request that the council deny any motion for continuance and proceed with the hearing this evening. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I said, I believe the applicants here as well, they may wish to elaborate a little more as to their request for continuance. I want to speak for them as I did.
I think Eric has a good point of giving a warning. The point is, they get one more, but you need to make sure that, well, I think the ask to come up is two weeks, is, it's a big ask for that window. So I think if we can come to some understanding that where we'll be, like some defining date, like this is the end date. If it's four weeks, I think it's only four weeks, we just need to come up with a date. You can't, I don't want to come two weeks and go, oh, I need two more weeks, I need two more weeks. When is, two weeks, but would you consider a date certain, if we decide the date tonight, this is your date?
No, my date isn't two weeks.
Your date isn't two weeks?
Hundred percent. That date, if they cannot, if they cannot confirm that it will be two weeks, then I will deny it tonight.
Okay. That's fine. I respect that, I just was.
No, I understood.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Jonathan Hules, 215 North Yola Drive, Orlando, 32801. And we do only want two weeks. We were asking for that request now for multiple factors. One being that we did hold a community meeting here in these chambers last Thursday. It was well-attended, 50 to 60 people in attendance. It was productive, it was a good conversation. We went over the updated elevations that have been worked on for some time, and went through several iterations before we settled on the elevation package for the project. We talked about the layout of the project and why it was laid out the way it was, and we solicited comments, and we got good feedback. We're considering some of that feedback now, and how we can incorporate it. It's, the way that that process works, we couldn't achieve that by tonight, to be able to commit to some of the things we're looking at. We want to continue to look at that. And of course, we have received additional input from the mayor with regards to cross-access that we definitely want to continue to evaluate as well, and make sure we are good on that end. And of course, this, this new issue that's been presented in terms of the speaker right before me was news to us. We had not heard of any of those objections or issues up until late this afternoon. So we'd like to evaluate what those comments and concerns are, and see, you know, if there's, hopefully start a dialogue. Communication's always best, sharing of information's always, I think, where we should start, and maybe there's a resolution there, perhaps there's not, and we'll be talking about that in two weeks. But we would like this additional time to work on all of those factors, and would support, would appreciate your support in that continuance.
Hi, Mayor, are you, are you, are you okay with, yes or no, it's fine?
Well, I'd like to say a couple of words. I'm, I mean, I'm not okay with it. I think we should just move on, but if, you know, at the end of the day, I'm trying to be good partners here. If that's what it takes, two more weeks, that's it. And then after that, I'd have to say no. Thank you.
I agree.
Joe, any questions, concerns?
No.
We'd need a motion.
Can I get a motion? How do you, you want to word it, Eric, the way you want?
Yeah, make a motion to table item 11 to next meeting, which is November 4th, I believe, with, I don't know if we can say this, but with no leeway for additional time after.
I don't know.
Turned out to legally, Scott.
And I'll second that.
I think we understood you.
Thank you.
First and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have 4-1. 4-1, 4-1, got that. And we will be moving forward. Thank you very much, we'll see you in two weeks.
I think we have to make a motion to move item 13 now up to the top.
Okay, can I get a motion to move item 13 to the top?
So move.
You made that motion, I'll second it.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment, if there's anybody, any other audience that wants to speak on anything at this time, that's not on the agenda, or gonna be on the agenda in two weeks, please come forward.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is Cheryl Pavlak at 1808 Carey Street, and I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware, as usual, that legislative session is getting ready to, with their bill proposals, and there's three that are being talked about quite a bit already. They're introducing legislation to lower the minimum legal age back to 18 for buying all types of firearms. I mean, if they can go fight in a war, they should be able to carry a gun. And then they are doing something that I have mixed emotions about, and I'm not here to tell you which way to do anything, but one thing is, the House is going to pass, or put forth legislation for Florida public school teachers to pledge an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Florida. I think it's sad that we have to have a legislation for that. My favorite one, though, is we have eight proposals on property tax relief for Florida, which is great. And something that I missed, they passed a proposal to use tourist development tax revenue to permanently reduce property taxes the last session. So that's good news, they've got an idea on how they're gonna do this. There's gonna be three bills going through on eliminations, has to do with non-school homestead property taxes, and they're adding, looking to add two new exemptions, and then three bills on reforms, and I won't go into them until I have more information on those. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She's taking your job away, Scott.
Appreciate it. It's like Legislative Corner. Look forward to it.
I love it. You go, Cheryl.
You should just have lunch and chat.
See, I don't have to read the updates now. Yes, sir, how are you doing this evening?
Good, thanks. Dwayne Smith, 2767 Purple Metal Court. Just wanted to make sure everybody remembers that next, on the 4th is election day for, I don't know if you don't have anything going on here, but it is gonna be happening in other communities around you, so I didn't know if you had anything happening here on election day or not.
No, so we did not.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I give them to you?
Okay. Can we ask what is concerning? That needs to go, Scott? We can, we can take those, but we really can't discuss any of that till the next meeting, but. That's fine. Well, we can go ahead if you have the, that's enough. Since it gets continuous, that's, everybody then gets to come at the same time.
I understand. My name is Dorian Catani, and I live in Triple E Road, which intersects County Road 561A about half mile east of the proposed construction. On page seven of the original resolution is a page entitled Exhibit B. The file is very small and blurry, so I requested a clearer copy. I noticed that the site plan is actually three pages, not one, but two and three were not included in the resolution. I am especially concerned about the proposed egress from the parking lot onto 561A. On the exhibit, I outlined the roadway with a green-colored pencil and the red line in the center of the roadway. Based on the developer's own drawing, a refueling truck would have to take the entire roadway, even the oncoming traffic lane, to make a right turn. So on the next page, I showed a larger version of it. And then on the following page, I gave you a Google map which shows the scale with an automobile on the road. On the Lake County Property Assessor's website, I used the interactive measuring tool to try to determine the entire width of the road in the area. I measured three locations and got an average roadway width of 23.7 feet. And the last page of the exhibit is an enlargement from page three of the site plan, including a refueling truck's measurements. The length of the rig is more than 15 feet, and I don't know how it would be possible to safely make a right turn out of the lot onto 561A and not jeopardize an oncoming vehicle. Prior to the installation of the traffic light, there were many times I witnessed cars and trucks speeding through that intersection. A refueller, a food supply truck such as a tractor-trailer, or an emergency vehicle such as a large fire truck exiting the parking lot onto 561A, in my opinion, would pose a significant hazard to oncoming vehicles. Today I spoke with Seth Lynch from Lake County Engineering, and although he said he was familiar with the project, he said he did not recall seeing that page three of the site plan with the proposed exit path for the refueller. He informed me that vehicles may not use the oncoming traffic lane to complete a turn. I stand in opposition to Proposed Resolution 2025-17, and I ask you to deny the special use exception. Thank you.
I would like to clarify something.
I appreciate your input, and I think we've had that discussion with the applicant, and that is what came up yesterday, that they're having to address the curb cut. What you saw, correct me if I'm wrong, was a concept plan. It was something that Seth would not have seen. It's just their first stab at this is what we think it would look like, then it would go to get improvement, approved. But they're having to go back and readdress everything you said and part of their, because that was what came up, is like, you need to have a plan for egress out of 561A. So they are, that's their homework for the next two weeks, to come up with a plan that has an idea that touches this, because that was everything, when we met yesterday, those were things that I discussed also.
Yeah, and Seth Lynch even mentioned that if you're going eastbound on 561A, you would need to have a turning lane to make a left.
They're gonna have to, they'll be responsible for making any road improvements, they have to, to do that, but they're, they're on it. Please stay, we appreciate the due diligence that you did, and we'll be back in two weeks, and hopefully we'll have some ideas. But in the future, I think there was a couple people asked questions about the package being complete, can you just make sure that everything is, kind of click through it, to make sure that everything is seeable? Thank you, thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
Yes, and just to clarify, we're, we're not gonna be discussing the fuels anymore this evening. We'll provide those, appreciate your comments, though, we'll provide that mater, those materials to the applicant and ask that they address those, among the other concerns, in two weeks.
Thank you.
Farmer Banks-Helfrich Clay Road District, South Lake County, farm tip of the day. Cool weather months, fall and winter, you can put a lot of crops into the ground now, such as brachyus or cruciferous vegetables, which include broccoli, cauliflower, cabbage, Brussels sprouts, kale, spinach, also mustard. You can also put ground vegetables into the ground now, which would be carrots, onions, rutabaga, beets, and also turnips grow quite well. And the quintessential fruit slash vegetable, the tomato, you can put in the ground. Mayor, council, distinguished guests, the U.S. Constitution was ratified and signed roughly 250 years ago. Immediately thereafter, our forefathers worked on the amendments. The first 10 amendments are considered to be the Bill of Rights, quite an apropos name for rights given to its citizens. These rights include the right to petition our government, the right to speech, the right to due process, the right to assemble, the right to press, the right to bear arms, to name a few. These Bill of Rights are explicitly written in the Bill of Rights, they are explicitly written in the amendments, and with them come one caveat. That caveat is the implied responsibility of that right. So yes, you can go to the middle of the market of every town, you can go to social media, and you can, at the top of your lungs, express yourself and speak your mind. My mother always said, be careful what you say, because those words stay with you for the rest of your life. So yes, responsibilities come with, I mean, I'm sorry, rights come with responsibilities. I am Farmer Banks-Helfrich, may you all be blessed, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Anyone else? With that said, want to get project updates?
If you so. Mark, that for the library, we have that grand opening coming up. Mark, know that for the library, we have that grand opening coming up, is that correct?
We do, the, the library is complete, the furniture, the last of the furniture was delivered and installed on the tenth. We have a ribbon cutting this Saturday at nine thirty, and then the Friends of the Library's gonna do an open house that same day at twelve.
Excellent. Think of the fire station, we agreed that that's already been completed, is there nothing else we can do for that, is that correct?
Yes.
We have the Grassy Lake Road striping and widening and stop signs?
Yes, that is, those bids are in, the engineers have evaluated those bids. One of them came in at a really good price, they wanted to double check that that was good, but that should be coming before y'all very soon.
Or if they're going to Home Depot to buy paint.
Yeah.
We're still on track to have that ready by beginning of next school term?
Yes.
Excellent. The second fire station in the hills?
It's under design right now, they, I'm not sure what percent it is, ten, twenty percent, but they have another meeting with the architect coming up next week. For an update.
Think we can close out the speed monitoring project in Oak Valley Boulevard, is that correct?
Yes, the, we, the speed humps are all been installed. The radar signs will be put on Lake Minneola, I mean, Lakeview Oaks in the next week or so.
Do we have a evaluation of the next neighborhood we're gonna target?
Right now, I believe we're gonna be focused on South Avenue where we get another set of complaints of traffic. And Main, South Avenue, and also Main Avenue.
All right, next one's more of an update, since it's more county related, but that's the Hancock winding on five sixty-one?
Hancock on five sixty-one, they're still working on that design. I'm not sure, you know.
It's supposed to be, they're supposed to be bidding it out next year, my understanding.
Yeah.
Wastewater treatment plant?
That's, that's still under design, they met, did an updated meeting with the engineers today. I did not participate in that meeting, but they are working on it as fast as they can. We've also met and we're working on trying to get funding for that as well.
It's complete, the GFL and Waste Contract, do you know?
Yeah, we still have, we don't have the same amount of complaints as we've had, I think they brought some more services in, some more trucks and some more staffing. But we are preparing to go out for bid, and we're gonna add some things to the agreement before it does, as a sample agreement.
When do we expect to start on that, or when are we, when are we gonna send it up for bid?
I'd like to try to get a document ready for the council to review by January. And then, you know, it may require a workshop or two with the public.
Now, the next one is the Trailhead Park Improvements, and we're gonna be approving that contract tonight, so we'll skip that. Next is the Parks Workshop for the second parcel, the thirty acre up in the hills. I believe that we're also approving on your consent agenda, which we didn't do, by the way. Oh, mine's first, okay.
That's after presentation.
Thank you, thank you, you got it. So we're gonna be approving for the, for the social media, so then after that, we'll be able to start doing those surveys. I know the second phase is subject to sewer, we're waiting on the wastewater, so we can move forward on that. Know that it's already complete, but just to turn the knife on Mr. Mayor, it's the landscaping of City Hall?
They're working on it today, they're wrapping it up, let's say, I think the last piece is up, so as long as they get the grass down, it looks like it was all cleaned up. And I think some of the stuff that looks like it's not landscaping issue was actually some chintz bugs. So it's like, oh, there's not grass there, it's like, well, there was, but the chintz bugs ate it, so they're redressing, cleaning it up, so.
Also, the, the roundabout on Jalome, the last, we've talked with the county, they're no longer gonna do the roundabout, they're gonna do a traffic signal.
Can I ask a question on this, because this is kind of annoying, annoying, annoying to me.
I'm sorry, what was it that you just said?
They're doing a traffic light, they're not doing a roundabout. So the question comes up to be, we fought everything about Jalome and, and Lake Shore, whatever. And then they go and put a traffic light at the end at five sixty-one A, and like, if they're gonna put a traffic light in, why they, why did they, why did they put it there, I would be, I'm curious why they put it there. I was thinking they put cameras on it, and so they used park funds that actually found to cover the crosswalk instead of a different bucket, instead of that, so. It was just interesting, because nobody's ever complained about that intersection before, that I've been here, and that's where they put the light at. Just confusing, I'm just confused.
I, I saw those go in, and I can, I can ask what warranted that signal's location, I can, I can ask.
Yeah, 'cause it's, you go up there and there's like really not a line, but, yeah, that was just confusing to me.
Yep, next is the memorial wall.
The memorial wall, as of yesterday, I received an email from Denise saying that the subcontractors in agreement that the top coat needs to be redone, and has ordered the materials, and she'll let us know what day we can do the ne, the new top coat. That's it on the memorial?
Next is the splash pad at the library?
Yep, now that the library is done, we're gonna gear up for the splash pad and the dock, you know.
The pier? The pier?
Thank you.
The pier, not the dock?
Pier, excuse me, the pier. So we, we're gonna engage in the, with a, you know, potential couple contractors in the next couple of weeks and try to get that going.
Is that gonna go to an RFP, Mark, for those two projects?
It, it depends on the, on the cost, so we'll, we'll take a look at that. One of the things we're gonna get to do is just get a back of the napkin kind of cost estimate, whether or not it needs to go out, out for bid, as far as the pier goes. The splash pad, the splash pad itself will have to go out.
Will not have to go out? You said will or will not?
It will, but the design and the layout, we could probably do without going out for bid.
And those are separate projects, so we're not.
Yes.
Yes, maybe separate. Okay. Let's skip that one. Hey, Mary, there was a note here that you wanted to add project managers to each of the project name, is that something we still wanna look at?
When he gets the staffing up, yeah, I mean. It's just gonna let it ride right now.
Okay, fair enough. All right, that's it, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Presentation, are we doing, did we move it, did we move your approval of the contract before the presentation?
No, no, it's just a regular agenda.
Thank you. The annual Miniola Artworks Murals?
How's everybody doing today?
Good evening.
My name is Gus Ortiz, ten sixty-eight Teneque Circle in Miniola. And we are, we were designated by you guys to be part of the Miniola Artworks Committee. And since twenty twenty, we've been doing a lot of work to, one, obviously put the murals up. We've been super excited about how they look, we do need to do some improvements, there's, it looks like the, the, the city seal, maybe water got under it or something, so we're gonna be working, we have some funds available still in the account, so we're gonna be using some of that to repair that. But the reason why I wanted to chat with you guys today, I don't have a clicker for that, so you guys are welcome to just, does it actually click?
It's right in front of you.
Oh, good, there you go, all right, perfect. All right, so these are the folks that obviously have been, been a part of it this whole time, including Lisa Harris. Josie Dix has been super helpful for, with us, but mostly it's been myself, Diane, and Lisa. Lisa Harris, with Lisa Jones having been one of the founding members. We've done a lot over the course of time, so just as a brief history, you know, we've consistently done a lot in the community. And, you know, it's, we're all volunteers, so we're just trying to make things work. And all the money that we've been able to raise has all been private funds. We've not asked you guys, we've not asked for any kind of grants or anything. We really wanna use the community businesses to try to help fund the projects that we have. You know, these are some of the projects that we did over the course of the years that have been really successful. Mott Fest being the recurring project that we've had year over year, with the exception of two thousand and twenty-four. There we go, whoops, sorry. So, well, we were able to put up twenty-two murals up on deck, which has been amazing. We still have spaces, I think two spaces available for the schools that are yet to be built. And of course, we've done some great projects in the community, getting the community involved, really kind of building a culture in our community that's allowed us to be able to build where we are today. This year, we're focusing heavily, we've, we've decided to pivot a little bit, because we started as a beautification project, and then realized that the arts, while it's wonderful to make things more beautiful, it's a great vehicle to bring attention to the needs of the community, sometimes to things that people don't necessarily recognize. Last year, we brought attention to the homeless population growth that was been happening in Lake County. We work closely in partnership with Find, Feed and Restore, and some of their partner organizations, to help people understand some of the challenges that come with homelessness, and using the arts to bring attention to that. This year, we're gonna be, we're gonna be focused on the Greater Claremont Cancer Foundation. They do a lot for the local community here in, in Lake County specifically. Obviously, everyone knows the Can, the American Cancer Society and stuff like that, but organizations like this, they, they really touch lives in the community, and it's really impactful. So we wanna go ahead and focus our attention this year on bringing attention to the Greater Claremont Foundation, Cancer Foundation, so that people can be more aware of what's going on in the community. Now, as part of the festival model, we've pretty much, every year, we come in, we start around eleven o'clock, we stay out there until about three or four o'clock, it includes music, it includes games, activities, usually some kind of artwork of some type, and bringing attention, usually themed against whatever, you know, we're bringing attention to. So last year was homelessness, this year it's gonna be cancer, and we're gonna be working with the Greater Cancer, Cancer Foundation to do that. So, you know, the expectations, these are some of the activities that we've done in the past over the course of the, the park. And we think that, you know, doing more of this kind of stuff is gonna be really impactful for the community. So you can see scavenger hunts, art healing spaces, Stories of Strength, Community Candace Project, where we kind of integrate some of the things that are happening with the Greater Cancer Foundation, and how the arts has an impact with art therapies and all that good stuff. So we're gonna have tents to kind of showcase some of that, so that people can kind of realize and recognize, one, how the arts impacts our community, but also that they are, become more aware of an organization like the Greater Cancer Foundation, so that hopefully they can get more contributions and help more people in the community. So we're, we feel that the arts is a really great vehicle to bring attention to these things, because we're not really built to do the things that they do. We can't really feed the homeless, we can't really help people and, and, you know, with, with cancer challenges, but we can bring attention to those organizations that are bringing those, those funds and resources to those people. So that's really one of the main goals that we've done as a pivot for the, the, for artworks. And it's been something that we've been really proud of and we're super happy about. So one thing that I, I will say is, in terms of our mission, you know, use the power of the arts to bring awareness to challenges in our communities. And one of the big things that we're running into right now is, honestly, is funding. A lot of the organizations that have sponsored us in the past, I think the economy and everything happening, and who knows geopolitics and all that good stuff, people are nervous, and we don't have the same kind of funding that we, we've had in the past. So, you know, one of the things that we are asking is, I know the first year that we did this, Duke Energy had contributed some funds to the city, and you guys graciously allowed us to utilize those funds to help us go ahead and get things going. We partnered then with the Orlando Health, and they brought great funding for us, and that helped pay for a lot of the things that we've been doing. So if you guys have any ideas that, that could help support us through some of the, you know, corporations that help fund the city, we could use the help. We really wanna continue building and, and doing great things in the community, bringing awareness where we can to the challenges that we're seeing in the community, and if you guys can do anything to help us with that, that would be very, very appreciated. Even if it's just an introduction to somebody, so that we can go ahead and, and talk to them about how, you know, what, what they may wanna have an interest in doing to help us with this program. So here, we're just kind of talking about the use of, the, using the arts to bring awareness to the community, can support local organizations that focus on supporting patients and cancer-affected youth. This is specifically for, for this year. Next year, we'll find another organization that is, where we see that there's a challenge in the community and bring awareness to that. So every year, we're gonna be identifying some kind of organization or some challenge that we're seeing in the community, and what is it that, that can be done to help address those challenges. So that's kind of our goal, that's now our new mission, and we wanna use the arts to do that. We think it's a great vehicle to bring attention, it's one thing arts is great at, is arts is very pretty. So we can, we can, you know, we can get eyeballs on the things that people need to focus on, especially if there are challenges. So that's really what I wanted to kind of introduce to you guys, if there's anything that you guys can do to help us out, that would be really appreciated.
Thank you very much for the presentation, thank you, thank you for everything you've done. Can, do you mind, not tonight, have this discussion, can you get with Mark?
Sure.
And just talk dollars and cents with him to see if there's what we have anywhere to do to help? Y'all have been very much self-sufficient, and we appreciate that, but see if there's something there, and then he can put it as a line item, and we can discuss it as council, but instead of having. It's not if I say how much, you'll say like a million, we're like. Let him kind of vet it, 'cause he knows.
No, no, I understand.
Kind of where it is, but if you don't mind reaching out to him.
Absolutely.
And thank you.
The only other thing I'd like to mention really quickly, I'm sorry?
Here comes the other ask, go ahead, no, I'm just kidding.
This is not an ask, actually, we realize and recognize that next year is the hundred-year anniversary of Miniola. And we would like to, this event has been a pretty, a staple of Miniola for the last, since, I mean, essentially, we started in twenty nineteen. And we would love to be a part of the hundred-year celebration of Miniola, and we'd like to find a way to use the artworks, Mott Fest in particular, to help celebrate that. So if there's any way that we can do that, we would love to do that, there's actually a, yeah, the, yeah. The Umbrella Project that we're actually gonna be launching in November, which is, which we've seen in, in sister cities like Claremont, where we're gonna get artists, we're gonna, we've already identified some, basically some umbrellas that will be used as canvases, we're gonna have artists, about fifty, is it fifty? Fifty? Thirty-five, okay, so thirty-five, we're gonna try to do fifty, but thirty-five is what we've been, what she's promising, but I'm gonna try to see if I can get her to do fifty. We're gonna try to find fifty artists that can do artwork on all, on these, on these umbrellas. The goal is to introduce them into as many local Miniola businesses as possible, create a campaign around going to see those umbrellas, so that they can also hopefully use that as an opportunity for them to maybe even get service from those businesses. And then maybe do one final, we'll do the, we'll bring the umbrellas into one location, and maybe even do like an art gallery style setup, like celebration with the umbrellas. And this will be like a whole introduction into the festival coming in, in January. So we have a whole introduction for, for the festival, it could be a really cool introduction that we do maybe for the hundred-year Miniola activity that you guys are already talking about. So I think there would be an easy way for us to integrate that, if that's something that you guys are already talking about, we'd be happy to participate. So, it's not an ask, just wanted to let you know that we're happy to share.
I think that's a great idea, so thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Managers consent agenda.
One, one question on it, Mark, so for item six, the Lake County Sheriff's Office contract, read through it, seems very similar to last year, where it allows us, or the sheriff to flex up and down depending on the need. Of course, we do have a very contentious item coming up, the proposed Walmart Sam's Club that's in that area. Of course, that, I'm not gonna say may, but will bring additional visibility into Miniola. How does that factor into this contract, should it go through?
Great question.
So this, this allows additional deputies to be brought on board without changing the contract, I believe up to eighteen, as they, as they're able to find them, you know, there's a, there's a staffing shortage, and it's challenging for them to find qualified, skilled deputies, so. They're able to ramp up with this, and if they need to go beyond that, we'd certainly come back and ask for approval for that as well.
So there's no guarantee that if that Walmart Sam's Club goes through, there's no guarantee that they can fill the, the spot of a deputy if needed?
Based on what I know right now, there, there's no guarantee, but I know they're trying to.
They can't fill them, and we don't have Walmart.
Right, no, I'm just saying, hypothetically, I'm saying if it does come through, there's stuff that we do need to think about.
Right, it won't be within a year.
It won't be within a year, you're absolutely correct, but just stuff to. You're absolutely correct, but just stuff to think about.
It's a fair concern.
It's a fair concern. Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience have any questions, concerns over this?
I have to make a motion to approve consent agenda.
You got a motion? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
First and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Site plan for Oak Valley Retail Parcel Number Two.
No, item thirteen.
Oh, sorry, my bad. I apologize. Contract SCG Fields, Trailhead.
Park design built?
Yeah, park design built. I was like waiting for you to take over because it's yours.
Okay. Item thirteen, contract SCG Fields, Trailhead Park Design Build. Scott?
So, we have the contract before you. We're, it, there's been some changes that's been made. I don't know that the contract is in the very last fee, but I believe they're going to be agreeable, but we just asked council to approve it, subject to city managers, city attorney modifications. That's it.
Okay. Do we know when we'll be able to get this under contract? Do we expect this within a week or two? Do we think it's going to be a little longer? Obviously, it's, the further we push out, right, the further it gets to start.
I hope it's in ten days or less.
Ten days or less? Okay.
I'd like to get it going.
Great. Any questions?
Anybody from the audience, comments? Bring it back for a vote.
You ready for that?
I'm ready for a vote.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve item thirteen, SCG Fields, Trailhead Park Design and Build.
First, can I get a second?
Subject to city attorney and city manager, comments within ten days.
Can I get a second?
A second?
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, ordinance twenty-five-eleven, live local, tax exemption, opt-out, second reading.
I'm supposed to say motion carries, but...
A motion carry. Do you want to go back to... Sorry. Number twelve. Site plan for Oak Valley Retail Parcel. Sorry. Actually, I was wondering why they were still hanging out, and I just remembered why.
This is a quasi-judicial matter. If there's anybody that may wish to speak on this, if you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say aye do.
Aye do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. For the record, my name's Eric Roche with Inspired Placemaking here in my capacity as a contract planner to the city. This is item number twelve on your agenda, which is the Oak Valley Retail Parcel Two Site Plan. I'll run through the request, the location of the project, and then I'll wrap up with a summary and recommendation, including summarizing the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. So, the project's going to be west of US twenty-seven, it's south of Oak Valley. You can see it here on the map, it is undeveloped, and it's part of a larger minor subdivision that has already been approved by council. The whole minor subdivision is four-point-six-seven acres, it's Zone B-one, which is general commercial uses. The proposal here is for a forty-two-hundred-square-foot medical office for a dentist. You may have seen a previous version of this plan that had a coffee shop also incorporated on it. I'll let the applicant tell that story, but it's my understanding that's no longer being considered at this time. The maximum building height within the zoning district's going to be thirty-five feet, and they're proposing twenty-three-eight. Access is all from US twenty-seven, so there's no access to Oak Valley on this plan, and there is cross-access to the future development parcels to both the north and the south. And they're meeting the required parking standards. You can see they're required to have twenty-four, and they're showing thirty-one. So, in terms of the summary, we received the application for the medical office and associated site infrastructure, was reviewed for consistency with the Land Development Code. We have no additional comments from planning or Lake County. We had an informational comment from Public Works that they can't plant trees within ten feet of city-owned utilities, which the applicant understands. We had an informational comment from Fire regarding all private underground fire lines, going through a separate permitting process. And then Engineering had one last comment regarding the addition of a swale on the backside of the property to redirect some of the drainage back to the stormwater pond, and the applicant's worked directly with the city engineer on that matter, and he has signed off in concept on a revision to the plan, which will be submitted after this meeting if you approve. So, P and Z was on September the eighth, they recommended approval for zero, subject to the staff recommendations, and then there were three conditions that they added. First was the issue with the swale, as I mentioned, to redirect some of the stormwater, which the applicants agreed to and staff signed off on. Two is the requirement to provide a new traffic study for any future site plans. So, they had a traffic study for this specific use for the forty-two-hundred-square-foot medical office, but they'll need to do new traffic studies when those other uses come in adjacent to it, and the applicants agreed to that. And then the last condition was a side shield shall be added to the westernmost light fixture. I think the concern there was some of the glare that could potentially be spilling over into the residential area, and that's something that came up at the P and Z hearing, and the applicant agreed to do that as well. So, with that, there are no additional staff comments on this. We request approval, subject to the staff recommendations, the conditions, and that revised plan as discussed. With that, I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Can you go back to the site plan, please? Do you have the site plan with the one before that, with the layout?
I've just got this one.
I do have a concern. It's not a showstopper, but we've got to figure this out. We need to figure it out as a city, as a whole. When they come into the landscaping, they're going to put trees in front of this place because they have to meet the landscaping requirement, but then there's overhead towers above it. So, in fifteen years, we're going to be butchering trees because it has power lines above it. So, how do we solve this problem now? Because it happens at all the other businesses, happens out here. How do we solve this problem now so it doesn't look bastardized fifteen years from now? What is the solution?
I think the solution is update the landscape code to require understory trees in those locations in lieu of canopy trees, and require the canopy trees in areas that don't have overhead power. So, I think it's a simple LDC fix that basically says...
But in the interim, how do we fix this? Do we just make, allow them, is the applicant have a problem with changing, adapting the landscaping in the front to...
And unfortunately, I don't have the landscape plan in this presentation. I can go check and see what those specs are. I think they're probably looking at it right now.
Right, but we're just asking to not have big freaking oak trees underneath power lines. So, if you want to go with an understory tree or something else, or forego it, so if you don't mind, do you understand my concern, right? So, go ahead, you can come up.
He's kind of scared of us. We're fine.
Good evening again, Jonathan Hules, two-fifteen North Yola Drive, Orlando, three-two-eight-one. Yeah, the, Mayor, to your point, I think we were just trying to meet code.
Right.
Seek a variance to put something in that the code wouldn't permit, but if it's the will of city council to not plant potential canopy trees that could have some type of interaction with those power lines that need to be clipped, we certainly would agree to planting an understory or some other type of material that would not go that height.
Just something that's a little bit more underneath the power lines of that piece.
We have no issue with that. That makes some sense, or does make sense to us.
So, can, the other thing I have looking at this site plan is, somebody can you explain to me, we're growing a city of the Meniala, and I know how US twenty-seven is going to get widened from five-six to one-eight all the way to the turnpike. You have the adjusted setbacks now, so when they come in in the eminent domain or take the property or do something, whatever they're going to do, how is that going to affect this project and what it looks like? Because I don't want it to turn up like Donut King and all that piece. So, how does, how does that work about the right-of-way for expansion of twenty-seven coming through here? Because we know it's going to come, and then all of a sudden, it's going to be a...
And it'll be prepared.
Right. Because if not, you're going to have, then you're going to have this squishy thing.
Mayor, I think here, we're not dealing with a constrained right-of-way where we believe they're going to need additional right-of-way to complete that work. I think from edge of, looking, just looking at the plan, about thirty feet of additional right-of-way from edge of pavement to be able to accommodate a widening. Certainly, we're not expecting and haven't gotten a notice that they're going to be requiring any additional right-of-ways in this property.
Well, I have to know in that corner, though, if they go widening too far, they're going to have to move some, do some serious electrical moving of some plans. So, I'm just making, trying to figure out. So, I guess in theory that they'll take a little off of you and they'll not take a little off the inside of it because they do have a large median between the two. So, somewhere in there, we're not going to end up with road, sidewalk, a car, two foot from it, so...
I don't, I don't believe so because it's not a constrained right-of-way today.
I'm not into traffic engineering, I'm just trying to plan for, as twenty-seven comes in, I'm just trying to plan for what's going to happen, what's going to happen, which is pretty important. You have the connection, so you have the interconnection between the two. I know that, so, Jonathan, I know in the resolution, there were, there's going to have to be another traffic study. So, when that traffic study comes through for parcel number two, that is when the adjustments are going to have to be made for the turn lanes and all that. So, that's, that one's going to have additional burden on top of it, correct?
Yeah, and right now, there was, when this came before you last fall, it had some conceptual concepts of what end uses were going to be. That parcel two, or I'm thinking of the parcel to the, to the right of screen, it was going to be a coffee shop, and there was discussion on whether there should be access off Oak Valley or not to support that. Ultimately, that use is no longer being proposed.
Right.
And so, really, what the thought here is, the end use of that tract is going to dictate what access may or may not be required and ultimately may not be supported by you.
I think on that one, Mark, we had talked to council that the access is, yes, important, but I think it's the additional lane for the right turn lane coming out of Oak Valley that we need to make sure that we get land for that piece, which the previous owner did not play nice with the county, or they would have built it, but they didn't want to do that.
Right.
So, parcel one can get developed with no more impact. So, basically, you'll just come in, parcel one, it's a clean, just put something there. Parcel two is the one that's going to have to have, I'm just setting expectations, is going to have to have some additional concessions made or more agreements work.
Potentially, if it's not a large traffic generator use, let's say it follows the same vein as the proposed, the site plan that's before you that has medical office, that's not a large generator, that likely can be, the access directly on US twenty-seven would be sufficient in terms of...
But it's not sufficient because that traffic backs up all the way, so we, there needs to be a right-hand turn lane there, but that's probably a discussion for another day. Let's say focus on, I'm just setting expectations.
Correct. And we certainly acknowledge that, that that discussion will be forthcoming when there's an end use determined for that, for that lot.
Looking at the layout here, you've got two, you've got a right-hand turn in, a right-hand turn in, and a dumpster in the back. How does that impact? How do you get it done? You don't have really an easy way for, and I'm just asking, the fire truck coming in is not going to be a problem off of this because it's a hard-donny coming in?
Yeah, I think that as part of the city staff's review, there was an auto-turn analysis, and it was reviewed and deemed to be functional.
So, that was, I didn't see, I didn't see. Okay, that's fine. Anybody in the audience have any comments, concerns about this?
Okay. Kevin? Go ahead.
Brad, can you bring that presentation up? Kevin Carey, two-zero-two-three-seven, Sugarloaf Mountain Road. Just during the P and Z.
I don't even see him up. He's coming.
Okay. Just a couple of clarifications while we're waiting. I, when we were talking about the roundabout at Jalami, that was one that I was talking to the county about, and there was issues with trying to get it to fit with the geometry, so I kind of see where they were kind of going with the signal, but the signal's not going to be easy either.
So, they punted and put the signal down the road?
Yeah. Okay, skip this one because we're not talking about that one. We talked about that one before. One of the questions I had in here across Oak Valley as part of the plans that were being provided, there is a storm sewer that's being cut across Oak Valley to feed the empty lot across the street. So, my question on this one is, I didn't, I still, the plans that were provided for this meeting were the same we had for the P and Z. I still wanted to see how this was going to be accomplished because they have a pretty big cut to get that pipe to fit in there, and it's, the people in Oak Valley only have one way to get in, they have the back way, but this is their, one of their main entrances, entrance/exit, so just curious as to how that's going to get stationed because there are already issues with the speed, people going through, and they're complaining about that. This would be another big issue for them as well. So, that's one thing I wanted to kind of have addressed. The other one, we talked about, they talked about putting a shield on the one that I have circled there. The other item that I've asked for people to provide is what's the lighting like for the homes behind it? We still don't have that. I'd still be curious as to what that looks like. That way, you don't get complaints from the residents there, so that'd be nice to have that for the upcoming.
The only time those residents ever complained, and they're fine with this, is when you tried to put a seven-eleven there. They came unglued. Just saying.
Lighting, yes, it's still, it's still going to be a complaint on their end, but...
The corner, the corner lot was very aware, I've had discussions with them, so they know it's coming.
Right. So, one of the other items I had here was some of the traffic numbers that they had, it shows the, the data from the report basically shows that the intersection does get worse, but they're not, there's not really any kind of accommodations to make that better. That was one other item that needs to be looked at. And then lastly, the turn lane on twenty-seven, northbound left turn lane, in their report, it's a little bit confusing, I don't think it's correct, but as you can see, the calculations I have provided there, they say that the turn lane is sufficient to stack the ninety-fifth percentile queue of three-hundred-and-ninety feet, but the turn lane really is, is only four-hundred-and-ninety-five feet. So, they're saying that the four-hundred-and-ninety-five feet accommodates seven-hundred-and-forty feet, so I don't know how that actually works. So, that would be something to, to correct or address before the development gets put in. So, anyway, that is all I had for your traffic engineering minute. Thanks.
But on the traffic engineering, they have, they're required to do another traffic study.
Correct.
Not now, but when you develop again.
Right.
For each, well, it would be individual for each parcel. If they do two, they'll have to do a study, and three, you'll have to be a study.
Technically.
Correct.
Okay.
That was part of the P and Z recommendation, so...
Can you go back to the site plan for a question, for a reason, for...
I don't know if I have that one. I'll have that one, but...
We can pop over. Oh, yeah, that's fine. So, can, riddle me this for your traffic engineer. I'm assuming that's your traffic engineer?
Civil.
Huh?
Civil.
Civil engineer, okay. What happens when traffic, when these other two uses weren't heavy traffic and you need to extend the decel lane, but you don't have a decel lane to extend in? So, how does that, do you move the entrance down, or how does that work?
You're talking about like the northbound turn lane?
Yeah, if you needed to move it because you need a longer decel lane because of the amount of traffic, is that going to have to require you to move the curb cut down? Yeah, if you needed to move it because you need a longer decel lane because of the amount of traffic, is that going to have to require you to move the curb cut down? Or does that, how does that work in the, for future developments?
You're, you're talking about for the, the, and the only driveway they have, is that what you're?
Yeah, the only driveway in and out.
This one up here? So, I mean, the, the only way they have in there now is after you U-turn. So that's the only way. And if you, if it really generates enough vehicles, you're pretty much warranting a dual left turn lane, but you can't accommodate that on Oak Valley. So that's the only.
I'm just saying if you get more traffic, I mean, you're doing the, you're, you're putting the right turn on in, you're turn, you're putting in the right turn, right lane turn in based off the traffic count for this business coming in. But what happens when you, another business comes in and it warrants a longer right-hand turn lane, decel lane? How does, how does that work?
Okay.
How does that work? Go ahead, John.
I'll, I'll answer and then Jordan, the project engineer, could fill in. But right now, the, the improvements being made by, with a left turn lane in, southbound, right turn lane in, northbound, are intended to serve the entire project. Because just by where this property lies on 27, this is, this is the turn lane that can be accommodated. It's been both reviewed and approved by FDOT, who's got jurisdiction over the road, both, both movements. So obviously to your point, Mayor, you know, that the uses have to be able to be serviced by this, this access point. And that will be part of the review that the city makes and FDOT will make in the future in terms of.
Thank you.
Site permitting. And, and just to the point, Mr. Carey's other points, we, we did add that one condition for the additional shielding on the one light. And we have submitted, I'm sorry you did not get a copy, of additional analysis of, of lighting that.
It wasn't in the.
Yeah, and, and you can further elaborate, but it was both the.
Zero and the property line.
And under both analyses.
Horizontal and vertical.
Horizontal and vertical. So we, there's no off-site lighting concerns based on the design.
I know Kerry had a question about the, the piping. There's one thing is when you do the, he has a good, he has a valid point, but when you do the piping, are you doing enough, a large enough pipe to handle the whole project? So you don't have to go back and repipe? Good answer. And second off, did we not mark a few, I live in that, that's one of my exits out. So we'd had to replace that line a couple of years ago, so we've already had to rip up that road. And I'm not going to tell them how they did it. I, it, it worked. It was, it sucked, but it sucks for a day or so, but that's just.
It's a pretty limited scope of work, obviously.
You do it at night.
There will be an MOT.
And they, they, but yeah, they had to rip it up pretty bad, so. Okay. Any questions from the audience, concerns? Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, sorry about that, I was, this is pretty much my side of vision. Questions, please, Mayor?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
I'm good. Joe? Questions, concerns?
You ready?
Yep.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
With the amendment that they do something with, that they have the flexibility to, the canopy tree.
Understory trees, not canopy trees under the power lines, yeah.
So that would be it? So I've got a motion with the first and a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero. Okay, can you live local now?
Yeah. Sure.
Tax exempt, opt-in, second reading for live local?
An ordinance to the city of Mineola, Florida pursuant to section 196.1978, subparent three, subparent zero. Florida statutes electing to not exempt property in section 196.1978, three DLA, Florida statutes, commonly known as the Live Local Act, property tax exemption for certain multifamily rental units providing for findings, providing for opt-out, providing for applicability, providing for advertising and notice to the property appraiser, providing for no waiver of rights, providing for effective date in expiration, providing for severability and conflicts, providing for effective date. If you're experiencing deja vu, at least three of you, that is correct. We actually approved this earlier in the year. My bad, the law actually requires you have to have two-thirds approval of council. And it was at a meeting, we only had three of you here. So two-thirds, it's more than 60% in my bad math, so we needed to.
We had three thirds.
We needed to re-advertise it and then we tabled it again. Anyway, we're back again. It's, we actually have that currently in effect for this year. It's a year-by-year thing, so this would extend that exemption or the opting out of the tax exemption for next year as well.
Okay, anybody in the audience? Bring back the council for a motion or discussion, go ahead. One?
I'm Stickler on this one. Cheryl Pavlak at 1808 Carey Street. And this is a question for Scott. On the ordinance, not on the summary agenda thing, section two, opt-out election, shouldn't it state in that last part where you talked about Florida statutes, comma, it says for households? Shouldn't it say for certain multifamily rental units to house, to households, just as it does in the summary? Because otherwise, it sounds like it's going to affect all households, not just multifamily rental units.
I can't pull it up, but yes, that's what it's supposed to say.
It's not what it says.
Okay, we'll.
I just want to make sure that that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll give it to Christine so she can.
Subject to clarifying that, we can approve.
Yeah, so it's good catch, Cheryl.
A scoreboard up there, Cheryl and Scott. What? Need to put a scoreboard up there for Cheryl and Scott.
Don't do that.
Thank you, Cheryl.
So can you approve a final? Motion with changes?
Clarify as necessary.
Final, final review. Do we get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for order 2025-11, live local tax exemption, opt-out, second reading with Cheryl's notes. There you go. You're officially on the, on the. Yeah, she'll be on the record.
Yes, she's on the record.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Final public comment, if there's anybody in the audience who wants to speak on anything?
Dave Egger, 2750 Purple Meadow Court, Del Webb. One is the land, 11 acres next to contiguous with the city, went up for sale for $5 million. It really needs to be eminent domain because it is in the best interest of the public.
Can you explain something on that because I'm trying to understand it? I know when I read it, it's, there's like this weird piece in the middle of it that we don't really need to go in depth about. So is it $5 million for that piece? And then if somebody wanted to buy the cream filling out of the donut, they would have to pay more money for that piece or does that include it?
Correct, correct. They're selling the 11 acres for $5 million.
So they're selling the donut and the cream filling?
And then the tenant, the tenant gets the right-of-way, gets to use the right-of, the easement right-of-way.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to, I was like, that was kind of a weird deal and that was kind, because when you did the math, when you did the math per acre, it looked like $390,000 per acre, but that was looking at the full acreage, not taking out the two that the person doesn't have rights to. So it was kind of misleading calculation.
And understand too, that whole property was appraised for $2 million.
A month ago.
The property next to it, the 16 acres, was 2.1 it sold for to Monica and Associates.
It was a couple of years ago?
Yes. So originally it started $40,000 an acre and it went up. But anyway, it's, it was appraised for $2 million for the, the whole 13.23. That was $2 million at that time and that was a year, year back.
I know a couple of meetings ago, we had asked staff, I guess y'all didn't get to reaching out to the person before it went on the market.
We tried to make contact with the owner at that time. We did make contact with the owner's brother and spoke with him, but the owner did not return our calls. But she has since contacted us and we have a meeting scheduled with her. Joyce, is it going to be Wednesday? Okay. One, I think next Wednesday.
Yeah, but unfortunately now that they've incurred a realtor, then that takes away from that piece, does it not? How does that adversely impact it or is that?
Hopefully they exempted out the city from the listing agreement, but I, we don't know, we wouldn't know. That'd be part of the discussions next Wednesday.
Y'all got homework to do on that.
We'll, we'll be talking with the owner directly and again, we tried in the past multiple times and she would not return our call.
So you can exempt out people?
Yeah.
You can say, I want to sell it, but if you, if these people come forward, then you're off.
The realtor has to be agreeable to it, of course, but you can list the property and, for instance, if you're working with somebody that you know is a potential buyer, you don't need the realtor for them, you can list it, but say if these people actually buy it, then I don't have to pay a commission.
Okay, guess we'll figure out.
But we don't know.
The, the realtor could be advantageous to help her have, have a better understanding of what the real value is as well.
Well, that happened on Chuck's, he didn't have a realtor and then he brought one in at the end, did he not?
I don't remember if he ever used one or not, I don't remember.
Or the lawyer, he brought something in at the end because he was scared.
For Chuck's property, yeah.
He did. Yeah, okay, so thank you.
Second thing is, just so, I've been here since 94, there was 4,000 people here, now there's 21,000. When we did a, a big meeting down in the city hall, now it's the library, and we spent eight, nine hours and we basically said this is where the turnpike is going to be and the city fathers through the years knew where everything was going to be and the turnpike is exactly where we said over 20 years ago. The fueling opportunity zone was always meant to be on a hurricane evacuation route or near the turnpike. That's just something for you to think about. That was what the city fathers for the last 20 years, in that vision, in that plan, we took a bus, we went to the turnpike, got stuck, we had to push out, Bob Poole was there. But again, that was where, the only time we turned down in those opportunity zones was a 7-Eleven, it was front of your mayor's neighborhood. And that was because it was near a water treatment plant and there is a statute that says it has to be so far away. Thank you.
Okay. I like the way he worked in the fueling station, little gray area on that one, but, wait a gap.
Candy Alexander, 872 Meadow Park Drive in Mineola. I'm going to wear a couple of multiple hats tonight. The first one is Nurturing Spirit Association, I am on the board of directors and we are thrilled to be part of the Safe Night Out. We're going to be representing all of our adults with cognitive and developmental disabilities. Our table is going to feature non-candy items for all of our adults and children that aren't able to eat candy for a variety of reasons, whether they can't physically chew or swallow or they have health concerns. So we're going to have stickers and fun little things for them, but we're really excited. We are nonprofit-based out of Mineola and we just really love the partnership that we have been working with the city on as far as using your facilities and we're just really excited. So I'm going to encourage all of our special needs families in the city of Mineola to come out and see our table and we're just happy to be there. And that hat's off. As a volunteer in your city, as a citizen, we're really excited about the workshop that's coming up on the 28th for the gardens. Four of our volunteer members here, Kelly, Lisa, Cheryl and I, along with the other Lisa and Eric, met at the gardens and had wonderful conversation, about two-hour meeting where we really discussed the gardens and we're really excited to see what the site plan was going to look like. And being that some of the original neighbors and those that have been there since the beginning have really given an input. Kelly has graciously gone to all the neighbors in that neighborhood and speaking with them. And so you will have a really great combination of input from those neighbors with the gardens and what that looks like. So we're really excited to see what that is about and we're hoping that under Eric's leadership with this advisory committee, when you get your new social media input, that we will have a clearer direction on what we can do outside of that, going into other gardens that might be representative and other parks in the city. So we're really excited about that and that hat is off. And now as the South Lake Junior Women's Club Board Member and Media Specialist, I did a live video tonight before this meeting started to promote our Veterans Dinner that is happening here. We are so thankful to the city for sponsoring the location for us. I know that our president and several of our members were here going through logistics, I believe with Grant in the, in the gym. All of our veterans will be eating for free and those that are purchasing tickets, it goes to our GFWC honor flights. We have several members, sister members that are veterans and they are helping us make sure that the event itself is respectful and in reverence to their service and to those that they served with. And on a side note, oh, I'm over, but I have to say it, I sponsored a table for my father who served 30 years in the Navy. He does not know it unless he's watching this right now, in honor of him. My son, who does a lot, will be there representing himself as a boy scout to meet everybody. And so we're just, as a family, really excited to participate. And then of course, being part of a wonderful organization here of women, we're just excited that the city jumped right on board. I know that falls on a lot of your memorial and I'm excited that we got that going, so we're really excited. So again, thank you for supporting all of the different organizations that I, I'm a part of. I encourage all of them to work with the city because you guys have been so willing and open to a variety of things that I'm involved in. But as a citizen, it's very important. And then for all of the people that showed up tonight, I would really encourage those that come to really talk about their passions and different things that they need to do and their investment in, but I encourage all of them to actually stay through the whole meeting. I think when you advocate a lot, you need to see the entire city for what it is and all of the things that we're doing to make sure that your voice is in every aspect of that. So I would encourage everyone who comes to meetings to stay for the entire meeting. And like I told Banks tonight, you can get up at the last point and say, "Thank you." So thank you all again.
Thank you.
When she says Eric, she means Eric Gonzalez. We got several Eric's here, but that's Eric she mean. He's a resident on Chester Street.
Ah, sorry.
Anyone else? Okay, Mark?
As Candy mentioned, the public meeting for the community garden, we want to get all the public input we can before we develop a site plan. It's going to be October 28th at 6:30 PM. It's going to be here at city hall. We wanted to have it on-site, but to do that would be during the day and we may not be able to have as many people there that have to work. So we, we schedule it to 6:30 at night. Again, the library grand opening is a Saturday, October 25th at 9:30 AM. The open house will be at 12. Safe Night Out is Friday, October 31st from 5:30 to 8:30. We have more radar speed signs and we're going to be working on the placement again. Some will, some will be pla, these are meant to be moved around. They're not, they're not as portable as being on a trailer, but they're semi-portable and that will mount them in the ground, but we can move them from time to time. So some will probably go on Main Avenue, some will go on South Avenue for now and we can shift them down the road. Sidewalks have been installed on Keystone Pass Boulevard. Several of the residents that live over in the hills have requested wider sidewalks for the students and that. Y'all graciously approved that and that's been, that work's been completed. Also, the, the, the mini golf facility next door did have their grand opening as scheduled and it, they did a really good job, it was a great event.
They did, thank you.
And that's all. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Yeah, Scott's going to, not Scott, I'm sorry, Mark, it's going to be part of my reports, but question for you for the P and Z members that were just appointed, have they been contacted in order to be sworn in?
The liaison did contact them and, and congratulated them and will have them scheduled to be sworn in at an upcoming meeting. But they, they have been advised they were selected.
Including the alternates as well? Okay. And then the other question, it's, again, I'll just say it now. A, a resident called me and asked if Mineola Lakewood Ridge Park on the corner of.
Yes.
Yes, across from her. Is that a city-owned park?
Yes.
It, it is and we're looking into some quotes right now to beautify it a little bit more. We're going to get, you know, change out the fencing. It is, and we're looking into some quotes right now to beautify it a little bit more. We're going to get, you know, change out the fencing to vinyl coated. We're looking at doing the landscape and just kind of freshening it up a little bit. It has been neglected, for sure.
Okay, so it is, it is a city. Okay.
And thank you for always keeping up with that. I appreciate that.
They're getting quotes now to just kind of freshen it up a little bit and.
Oh, Winding Oaks Way Park.
They're down. There's a basketball court and everything. That's a city-owned park also.
That's right here.
There's a basketball court and a playground, and that's a city-owned park. Joe, is the one in your neighborhood city-owned or is that your HOA?
No, HOA, it's.
One of the things we're thinking about doing, I, we're not sure we're going to be able to do this or not, but we were gonna, because the playground at Trailhead Park is eight or nine years old. We were looking at when that's demolished for the new playground and maybe shift it over to that park to beef up the playground.
That would be nice, yeah.
Now, if we do that, can we revitalize that equipment, you know, repaint it, make it look nice and not just take it?
Useful, it still, you know, it still has plenty of useful life, so for.
Absolutely. And then for the, the contract for Trailhead, I noticed that there were some items that already stated the type of equipment that's going to be used in the playground. One of the items that we spoke about was for Candy to be involved in those discussions to ensure that she has an input on the type of equipment that's being on there. Has she been, Candy, were you contacted at all or not yet? Not yet. Can we make sure that she gets contacted prior to contract signing, so that way she can look at it? Thank you, Candy. Thank you, Mark.
Yes, yes, sir.
I should say, even after the contract is signed, there's going to be a public meeting design thing, so further input at that point. In other words, what's the concept on the, on the plan? Isn't just, isn't in stone what's going to be?
Right, right. What caught my attention was that it specifically stated the type of playground units that were there, so I just want to make sure she reviews it. And if we can, we could eliminate that. That way we have more time to think about. So Candy, just review it and just give me your thoughts, please, when you have a chance.
I'm going to ask a question because we had met previously in Candy's, we met with Dreamplex about doing the park some changes. So can you involve somebody from Dreamplex or represent Dreamplex on this piece? You need to come up.
Sorry.
I'm just wanting to make sure that, because we did go out and we had, we had a special meeting with Dreamplex and we said it was getting changed and they wanted input. We met with them and everybody together, and I'm just wanting to make sure that they're engaged. But you're, you're part of, you've got a relationship with Dreamplex too, so I just want to make sure.
Well, the special needs community in general, we, we all overlap. I, my, my big thing is the family. So I know who lives in the area, which families are going to utilize your park, what they like to see. I'll give you an example. I had a family that contacted me for a park that was previously just finished in Clermont. And she was like, oh, my gosh, why didn't they have this or where they have that? And, you know, she made things happen. So sometimes it's really the families that are going to be utilizing your parks that give you the best input because they're the ones that are going to show up. And they're the ones that are going to play, and they're the ones that are going to bring their friends. So I always encourage that. I love all the organizations, part of all of them. And if you need that, that's perfectly fine. But I think if we have an open discussion, I will be making sure every family I know that lives in this city and needs to have a voice will be here. I will really encourage that to make sure that they are giving input. Because remember, different children with different disabilities may need something just a little bit different, or they can kind of compromise and say this would work for ninety percent of everybody. And we're also looking for children age to adult age because a lot of our adults will come and play at the park. And how does that look? How does that integrate? Do we have a better sensory area for more of them? And so it's a big concept, and if you're willing to go all out and include, then I will make sure that we have people here to help guide that. Ultimately, I'm going to trust in the people that you are going to have create this, but with a lot of great input, I think it can be all accomplished for everybody, just our little part of it. So, sure.
Thank you, Candy. Thank you.
Do you have anything for Mark? Scott?
Just two things. One, I always like to say a housekeeping thing. The, you know, you recently approved, fresh on your memory, the, the potential grocery store on the forty-eight thousand plus or minus square foot grocery store on the west side of twenty-seven. The applicant contacted us the other day and said that when they got their final plans together, the final outside square footage of the current plans are forty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen square feet, which is like a little more than three percent more than that. To me, that was well within the plus or minus aspect of the forty-eight thousand, but they are cautious folks and just wanted to make sure that was okay. Your code allows staff to give variances of up to ten percent, but given that this was a recently, I won't say contentious, but that there was some questions on that, they didn't want to do that without making counsel aware.
Developers that's building the seven eleven on five sixty-one A?
I think so, yes, yeah, so.
Yeah, so maybe they need to come back in front of council.
Well, the, I believe that the forty-nine thousand is well within the forty-eight thousand, so we were going to be sending them a letter to say that, unless you want some sort of.
Come back to council and personally ask it, personally ask us instead of working through you, honestly, unless somebody else has a question.
I can give them my answer now. Do you want my answer now? Do you want my answer now?
We can hold off on that, I guess. All right, we'll get some more details from them and ask them to provide.
Again, this comes up to the point of they probably should do a little bit more due diligence on their projects and not just start throwing things out front and asking. They need to know everything they're asking for, just like they didn't know about the cost connection. They didn't know their square footage. They should have known that.
Make sure nothing happens, Scott, before, I guess, before council.
Oh, we'll contact.
Thank you.
Well, that was the easy one. No, the, actually, the second one is I am not going to be here at the next meeting. I swear that plan was made before I knew that the gas station was being tabled to the next meeting, but Jennifer will be here. She's actually more aware of that whole project than I am and will do a fine job. But if you have any questions in the meantime, please reach out. It'll all be good.
Anything for the?
No, thank you.
No, no, thank you.
Anything?
No.
Scott, I'm going to refer to you or I can say, but I need to disclose the email that I got this morning at five o'clock in the morning that I forwarded to you and Mark.
Oh, yes.
We have been noticed on the gas station that they are prepared to take legal action.
Which gas station?
The one, the seven eleven on five sixty-one A. The landowner is not happy the way it's going and has stated in writing, and that's why I'm telling you, that he is prepared to take legal action. I'm not sure what that means. I'm not sure what, what that means, but I just need to say it is public record, you know, somebody saying to me on the side of the road, you're going to let go, but it's once it came through. And now that we have to disclose all our communications that we've had with everybody about this, so make sure that you have your list, you have a phone number. So for me, I have gone through my phone and what numbers called, what day they called, what was the topic. So your personal cell phones can get subpoenaed. Your city cell phones are regular, but you need to backtrack every phone call that you've gotten since this has gone because that was the email that Mark said. If you've had any discussions outside of here, you need to make sure that you've covered your rear butt. So if you talk to a resident about this and they called you, you need to say what day you told them and what you, what was discussed for every communication. And it will be retroceded back to, if they want to, they can look at your cell phone records and say, these are the numbers and cross-reference. So you can do that in a memorandum or you can read them out, but that's something that you have two weeks to complete. So every time you've talked to somebody, and if it's a number for somebody in the hills or any resident, it might be every residence that you've talked to, but you probably need to make sure. I think that was Mark's email last night explaining that we really need to make sure that we cover. If nobody's, if you haven't talked to anybody, that's not a problem. But if, for me, I talked to Tara and Kevin at the chamber breakfast, so I have to know when I talk to them. If they call me, I need to say when I, you know, when I talk to them. You know, I've only talked to Dan twice in any meetings I had suddenly, but you need to document every call you've had on your phones. Personal cell phones, and if you have a personal city, both of them. So just to be prepared, because.
If you have any questions, that's your man.
Yeah, I do have a question, Scott, on this. So correct me if I'm wrong. A special exemption is exactly that, a special exemption. So if we were to vote no on this, we're not going from a legal standpoint denying them anything they can and cannot do since they're going above the, the code that's on there. Is that a correct statement?
Well, they, obviously, even now, the property has a host of permitted uses, anything within the B one.
Which we're not denying. Correct.
It's not affected by this. But if, if they believe that they met the standard for a standard exception or for a special exception in our code and it was denied, they have the right to challenge that and say that it was improperly denied. They can go to circuit court and make that argument.
And our staff, and our staff approve, and our, and our technical or professional or technical experts that the city has hired, who's not here right now, they actually recommended approval of it. So, and that, that's why when it comes back and it's a quasi judicial, we can only look at the evidence that are prepared in front of us by our staff or by them. So any of these communications that we have outside of that cannot be considered into it. And yes, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying it's a winnable case. I understand what you're saying. I'm saying, but anybody, but you can sue anybody for anything.
No, I completely agree.
It's got to play through the courts.
Sure.
But if they go down that route, we need to make sure that we are able, when we get asked for any communications that we can provide it. At the end of the day, it might not mean anything.
Sure.
It's just protecting us as a council.
Right, but to your, to your point where, yes, the experts did review it. They said we can move forward with it. But us here on council, isn't it our responsibility to not only look at this project singly, but also holistically from a citywide view to ensure that it's going to benefit both the applicant, the owner, and the surrounding cities within, of course, its bounds of it being a special exception? Again, if this, they're asking anything that was within a B one usage, we deny it, completely understand it. But since they are going for an exception, that word itself means that they're going above and requesting something that's above and beyond what's already stated within that zoning.
But at this point in time, just we probably need to stop the conversation because.
I'm not asking for an answer, but just.
But, but no, I.
Without, without getting into.
It's, it's just where does the city want to take, where does the city want to take us to? And just make sure that we're, we feel secure and I'm good with it, whatever y'all decide. Unfortunately not. Sorry. We'll be here in two weeks.
But to answer that question, yes, even, even though they still have other uses, if you, if we improperly deny a special exception, they would still have the right to challenge that.
Well, I mean, anybody has the right to challenge anything, so.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
Right.
And if they have the right to challenge and they have a right for you to give everything, I'm just saying, make sure that you're, that you're prepared to go down that, to do that. And I was prepared to do it today.
And I thank you to Mark for reminding about that disclosure. That just needs to be nayed. You can either do it verbally at the next hearing or you can do a little memo that you give to the clerk in advance of that. Either one is fine.
And the, and I just made the comment of, you're not, you don't, you don't have to give your cell phone records. I'm just saying, when you give your memo and you either state it or you give it to Mark, if they choose to go to court and want to subpoena your phone, you better make sure that what you gave them ties to what's on your phone. They're trusting you that everything you're giving them is there, so just double check your numbers.
Phone deletes itself every thirty days, so.
But I think it's, for, for, for me, I'm only going back thirty days or whatever. I'm like, I'm, you're, I'm not going to say every time I talked to Dick or talked to Kevin in the last year and a half.
Sure. Relevant to this project.
Relative to this project, which is in the last thirty days.
Sure, sounds good.
So if I give them my phone, does the wire go with it? How long is the wire? It goes all the way to the AT and T terminal. I guess I wouldn't know that. Let me, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
The property is owned by Sun Terra. Is that correct?
Yes.
The developer is seven eleven or, or franchisee of seven.
We never really figured out the food chain after that.
Or somebody. We don't even, we don't, I don't think it's been really said who wants to build this gas station. But it seems to me unclear that the property owner would sue the city for the developer. It would seem to me that the developer would have to sue the city to get permission to build that land. And he doesn't own the land, so first the developer's got to buy the land, and then he can sue the city.
The landowner is the one that sent me the email.
Yeah, but I don't think he can sue us over limited use because we haven't denied him anything.
It's a public record. I actually did not read that email to think that there was any suit versus the city. He mentioned possible legal actions, but.
Right, that's all he said?
He's ringing a bell. Look at me.
That's, yeah.
I'm just disclosing that that's what he's saying and just to Mark's point is we're just making sure that we're cross, as, as we go on this journey, just make sure that we cross our Ts and dot our Is. That's all I'm saying.
Enough said.
Yeah. I guess I'll have to keep a list because I, I can't hand over this phone with the wire attached.
No one asks to hand over phones, nothing like that. It's a very simple disclosure.
By the way, to get your phone, you have to have a warrant or subpoena.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But it's just how far they want to go.
Do they have to give you a temporary phone to replace it? I don't know. A lot of things I don't know these days. I'm not familiar with.
Sometimes it's good not to know.
With the phones you use.
At least you didn't ask, are they going to subpoena your fire in your blanket for smoke signals?
Pigeon? I wonder how many times we're going to go through this though.
Probably say one more time. They only get one more.
Only one more?
Except they're going to have a lot more firepower.
Well, we got one at the town center, which used to be a town center. Now it's a Walmart, I guess. I don't know what the hell it is. There's no one coming up there, I guess. I don't know. Fortunately, the Circle K on Hancock Road got stuck in Clermont and not in Mineola, but that's, that's another case of study.
So that was it, Scott. Thank you. Pam, anything?
Yes, on a brighter note, I did want to mention that I did, and so did our city clerk and our city manager, get in touch with the, with Lisa Rose. She's with Brand Squad to do the tent and the tablecloth. And I wanted to just kind of let you guys know the, kind of like what it looks like, what, what my recommendation would be. I have one, and this is kind of the, kind of the route that I went as well. And if you guys are more than welcome to take a look at it, and if I could just get it back, and if you have any suggestions, if you can please let us know tonight, because I would really like to get this ordered. This is, that's the top of the tent.
For.
For.
We're having a tent, so when we go out to public events.
Oh, public events.
That's the tent, and the second page is the tablecloth just opened up. On the other two sides will be the, the city seal on both emptied sides. Again, this was something that I, I really wish we could have had done for this Saturday. Unfortunately, we can't, but I would like to move forward as quickly as possible. So at any other events that we have, I don't know even if it's for Halloween, to be able to get it, then I don't know, but I want to get this approved.
I'm fine with that. All I ask is you buy a second one in case it gets destroyed in a hurricane and we have a backup and we don't have to wait another nine months to get one made.
Okay.
Agreed. I was, I was, we were about to say that. If we're going to go one, let's buy two. I mean, what's the cost of it? It has to be sub thousand. Yeah, so I would get two.
So a recommendation for a quantity of two of these, and is everyone okay with this, again, with the adjustment of putting a city seal here and one here as well?
What's the name of that blue, Pam? What's the name of that blue, Pam?
I don't want to know the, what is the PRQ code of it? What is, what is the, is it Q? What is it? Is it? That looks like a two forty, one eighty.
Yeah, it does look like that.
Sixty, I think.
Can you just confirm the code for us, please, or so?
Oh, it's, it's just a, a blue.
Thank you.
It's city Mineola blue.
Oh, perfect.
That's what it is, yes.
C and D.
Mineola blue.
Mineola blue, that's good.
Yes. Thank you. Other than that, I'm good, and thank you, guys. Can we move this along?
No, I'm just excited about Saturday and the ribbon cutting at the library. And I was also going to address that I did reach out to the new members, which Ken Rose is here in the audience. I did reach out to them and tell them about the next meeting and our plans going forward. And that's all I have.
I got nothing. All right.
It's been a busy week. It's been a stressful week, so we'll get through another two weeks.
That's right.
There's more coming. Don't worry about it.
So with that said.
It's about time to say I'm out of town.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I will second.
I said adjourn.
I did. I am second.
And I second.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. When I touch this thing, it goes off.
Because you have a, you don't have a cell phone.
I tried to pick it up and it, the thing goes off.
What, goes like the screen?
I don't know what the hell it does.
What do you say, what do you say goes off? What do you mean? Like the screen turns off?
I put it up like that, okay? And he puts the thing like.